I'm going to call us to order. It is 6:29 and 30 seconds, so we'll go on and get started here on this. I'm going to ask Commissioner Hasty if you'll open us up with prayer this evening.
Sure, let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you've given us for health, strength, and peace. We play your blessings upon our great country and our community. A blessing on our military and our local responders, all who protect us. We play a special blessing for our mayor and our staff that do an excellent job managing efficiently the business of our community. We pray that you will be with us as commissioners, planning commissioners, that we will do what is right for our community. Be with us in all the things that we do, these things we ask and dine in. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Hasty. Ms. Shin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty.
Here.
Longmire.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Slattery.
Here.
Silkwood.
Here.
Coker.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the acceptance of the agenda. I assume everybody's gotten the opportunity to review that, and so I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
I have a second from, I believe it was Commissioner Altizer spoke up first, so we've got a motion and a second. And Caitlin, will you call the roll on that, please?
Altizer.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hardwick.
Yes.
Hasty.
Yes.
Longmire.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Slattery.
Same.
Silkwood.
Yes.
Coker.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda item is a public hearing. We have a public hearing scheduled for tonight to hear comments on a request by Rick Morrow to rezone 4.3 acres from general commercial plan development and office plan development to general commercial plan development and to approve a comprehensive development plan for the property. The property is located off East Main Street between Maple Road Boulevard and Maple Drive on the south side of East Main Street. Looked like we had three speakers sign up for that this evening. If you've never, if you've signed up for this and haven't done this before, what we'll do is ask you up to the podium one at a time. I'll call your name out. When you come up to the podium, just introduce yourself, even though you put your information on the signup sheet, just state your name, state your address, if you would, and then just address your comments, and the floor will be yours. But first up is Nancy, if you want to come up and speak.
Okay, so you meant to sign up for Chick-fil-A, or... Did I, I was there with...
Okay.
This is the one.
This is the, this is the one. This is the one.
Oh, so, okay. Nancy Carreras, and I'm, so, 261 Prince Philip Tower. Castleberry, Florida. Good?
Good.
Oh, do I speak now?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, oh, so I'm presenting my case, my apologies, I didn't, okay, so, this is for the existing Chick-fil-A located at 1033 Glenbrook Way.
No, I'm sorry, okay, no.
We do have two.
Yeah, we do have two Chick-fil-A items up tonight, so...
My apologies.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm for the second one, I believe.
Okay, then, if you don't mind, what we'll do is we'll get you then, during the public comments section, that'll come right after this, so don't go far on that.
Okay.
Adam, I believe you were up next for this public hearing.
I'm Adam Ledsinger. I'm the engineer representing Mr. Morrow on the Alexander Commercial Development. I don't really, I'm from Lexington, Tennessee. I don't really have any comments, I just wanted to let you know who I was in case we got to ask you, ask any questions.
Okay, yeah, and we'll, we'll ask you up during the presentation time on that, so thank you. And then, next up is Miranda on...
And same here, I'm Miranda Kelly, I'm from Brentwood, Tennessee, and I'm also here representing Mr. Morrow, who's actually my father, on this development, so...
Okay, okay, and same thing.
So happy to answer any questions whenever you guys have them.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other speakers that intended to sign up for the public hearing on the property, on this Main Street property? Seeing none, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and now we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is public comments, and then Nancy, this is where you will come back up and speak on the other Chick-fil-A items.
Yes, so, this is for the existing Chick-fil-A located at...
Would you say your name and address again, please?
Yes, okay. Nancy Carreras, my address is 1361 Prince Philip Drive, Castleberry, Florida. And I'm here to present the existing Chick-fil-A located at 1033 Glenbrook Way in Hendersonville. They're proposing a dual drive-through expansion. This is going to include a transformer relocation, dual order meal delivery canopy, there's an existing single lane, they're going to remove that and replace it with a dual drive-through. So the point of the intent is to expand the dual drive-through, two-lane approach, this will expand the queuing lanes, the cars on site, alleviate the traffic backing up off of Glenbrook Way. I was there earlier today, and it was a little bit of a bottleneck at the entrance, and I actually had to park a little bit off-site.
Okay.
So the point is to expand the drive-through to the dual drive-through canopies, this is for team member safety, to allow them to safely deliver the food to the clients and the customers, also for their safety from the elements. These canopies will have fans and misters. There's an existing dual lane face-to-face, this is for the second order meal delivery on the other side, so they're expanding the whole dual drive-through, two-lane approach wraparound, which, this will alleviate all the traffic circulation and just expand the site. So the point of our request today is that we're not meeting the landscape ordinance, so I'm requesting a waiver from the seven-foot required landscape ordinance to request five feet for that landscape ordinance. And we've resubmitted, Mr. Whitten, addressing the landscape comments, I've sent over the revised landscape plans to include all the updates that we had for the landscaping on site.
And we'll get to that. You're item nine on the agenda, so we'll get, we'll ask you back up then to kind of ask any questions, since we kind of go over that, so...
Wonderful. Sit down.
Yes, if you're, if you're done, I didn't mean to cut you off, it just sounded like you were done.
No, 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 if you have any questions for me, I'm, I'm available.
Okay, thank you very much. Were there any other, any other attendees that intended to sign up for the public hearing? It looked like Jackie, you were, Jackie Fan, yeah, if you would come up, just, yeah, this is the citizens' comments on agenda items on that.
State my name and address.
Yes, please.
I am Jackie Fan, and I work, and I live on 220 Curtis Crossroads. It's where Sanders Ferry meets Walton, that curve that everybody has wrecks on. So we just moved in there three, three, three years ago, and we do have, just want to ask the new developer who's planning to build right next to us some questions about, you know, how he plans to, to build these homes, that's all. So, do I ask him now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is, this is your opportunity to speak, citizen.
Okay, so who, who am I directing the questions to?
Do you mind pulling your microphone down, so we can hear you a little bit better?
Yes, sure, sure. Who am I directing the questions to? Just everybody, or...
What they would be right now is they'd be rhetorical on this, and they would be for us to then ask the developer on your behalf on that if there were things that we wanted to get, so...
Okay, so, several of my neighbors, so we live, if you know anything about Curtis Crossroads, we live not on the lake, but, you know, at the end of the peninsula, and, you know, the lots there are relatively large. There are anywhere, there are five acres, we live in a cluster, and it's been really, really nice, and that's why we moved there, and that's why we built our, our, you know, forever home. One of my neighbors here today, and we have a couple more, maybe one or two coming to join us. But, so right next to us, I think it's 244, is it 224? I get the numbers mixed up, it's, we, we always call it George's, George's property. George has passed, and if you guys know George, he was a great guy. So they plan to tear down George's old home and build eight to 10 homes, I don't, we're not quite sure, but we do have concerns around the traffic, so, as you know, that there are a lot of families on that road, and I work from home, the luxury of working from home, and when I go out and walk around, I see a lot of kids wa- walking up and down that street. There, there are no sidewalks, and I always, you know, I'm concerned about that, there should be some level of, there should be a sidewalk in that area, especially when that sharp curve, that sharp curve, and, and you're, you're coming across, you can't really see on the other side, on either side. So I am worried about, you know, adding additional people, especially single-family homes with children. Where's the sidewalk going to be? Another thing is traffic. I do know that, that the plan is to have the road leading into the new subdivision via Duckwood, I think that's the name. That is a lot better than coming off of that curve. Again, that curve, you guys, you drive by, it's always dented, people are always, wrecks are always happening there. So what is the plan to mitigate the traffic, right? Drainage, let's talk about drainage. So, the original neighborhood was built, they pull all the drainage from, from, if I'm, this is my house, I'm looking across the street, all the drainage is coming from that side opposite of me onto our side. So when there's a lot of rain, that whole area is flooded. I'm lucky, because I live on a hill, but in George's property, right next to him, those neighbors' backyard are constantly flooded. What are we going to do drainage about those, for those neighbors? Again, I'm good, but for them, you know, we don't want the impact of this build to have additional drainage issues that they currently have today, okay? Noise control, our neighbors, we, we, we're on five acres for a reason, so what are we, what's the developer going to do about noise control? Are there going to be additional trees, are they going to tear down trees, or are they going to put up some additional trees? Because if you're ever back there, there are some ancient trees, I mean, big, huge trees, that's been there forever, right? They're going to take it down, what are they going to replace with? Considering the environment, right, not just for our generation, but for future generations. And then the quality of homes, you know, I can probably estimate on our little circle, they're pretty nice homes, you know, are we going to build, you know, single-family homes are, are absolutely fine, but we're, we're concerned about the plots, plat size. Are we going to build a bunch of single-family homes and squeeze everybody in there, or are we going to give the area some respect and build it thoughtful, in a very thoughtful manner, and, you know, for the rest of the community, for that, for the folks currently living there today, and have a lot of pride living there, to appreciate the new subdivision? What are we doing about making sure the homes are of quality, and they're just not putting up homes just to be putting up homes, and making, you know, quick wins? Are they considering, once again, the neighborhood, and the future of our children, and the future of that area? And that's it. I mean, the drainage, the traffic, the sidewalk issue for the kids, you know, there are a lot, the Walton Ferry kids coming in, people are walking to Sanders Ferry. When I walk to Sanders Ferry, I have to go back behind my neighbors, who are great folks, I have to cross their land, there's nothing to connect that Curtis Crossroads to Sanders Ferry without, again, that turn, that if you go back there, you'll always see it dented, because people are driving so fast, what are we doing about that? So sidewalk, noise control, qualitative homes, size of, of the plat, size of the lot, and the environment, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there, were there anybody else that intended to sign up for citizens' comments on agenda items that did not get an opportunity to? Seeing none, I'm going to close this portion of citizens' comments, and we'll move on to item six on our agenda, which is just the approval of the minutes from our July meeting. I assume everybody's gotten the opportunity to review those, and so I will entertain a motion to approve our July 10 meetings.
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Altizer, and I'll entertain a second.
Second.
I believe it was Commissioner Martin, so, Commissioner Martin with a second, and all of, we'll do a voice vote on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item seven, final plats. We don't have anything listed there, director, is there anything?
No.
Okay, okay. Then, item eight then is development plans, and this is for the Alexander Commercial Development property, the comprehensive development plan, and ask representatives from the developers come up, so we can ask questions on this. What we'll do is we'll have staff give us their introduction and things, and Timothy, I think you were on this, so if you want to kick us off with the presentation, and then we'll open it up for discussion among the commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. This project is located on East Main Street, close to City Hall, it's across from the future Mayfair development. It is, consists of three lots, two of which are vacant, sandwiched in between the Simmons Bank and Regions Bank. It's currently zoned, two of the lots are currently zoned, office PD, the middle lot is zoned, general commercial plan development. There are two plan, master plans that cover these, this property, the Burris Development and then the Jack Alexander Master Plan. This proposed comprehensive development plan would replace those two older plans. The proposal is to build, put three buildings on it, two, two of them would be quick-service restaurants, one is potentially a Starbucks, one a Chick-fil-A, and then a urgent care medical clinic. Other uses that would, listed, that are listed as allowed for this new plan development are art gallery, health and fitness center, call center, retail goods establishment, general business services, medical dental clinic, personal services, restaurant full service, then restaurant quick service limited to two. One thing I should mention, there on page three of my staff report, a list that currently allowed uses for those two older plan developments, financial consulting and administrative services, general business and administration services, general personal services, that should not be on that list, that was later removed by action of the Board of Mayor and Alderman, and the other two uses, professional services, medical, and then, and professional services The, there is a, a 20-foot buffer that's required adjacent to the residential homes, this backs up to, they're proposing a 30-foot wide buffer, so proposing a wider buffer than is required. I think their intent is to preserve as much of the vegetation back there as possible. The, they did provide some building elevations on two of the proposed buildings, the Starbucks and the urgent care clinic. Those, as proposed, those don't really yet match up to our required level of design. I do have staff, staff comment in here that if it's approved, that they would be expected to meet those minimum, minimum standards and exceed those standards. So if this is approved, we will be working with applicants to, to make sure all these buildings exhibit a superior level of design and materials. Yes, that's, that's it.
No, you all introduced yourself briefly a moment ago, if you would, just introduce yourself again, if there's anything that you want to add before we open it up to questions, comments, that sort of thing.
Okay, yes, I'm Miranda Kelly, and I'm here representing Rick Morrow for this development, and, you know, happy to answer any questions you have. As you mentioned, we are proposing a 30-foot wide buffer, and in addition to that 30-foot wide buffer, there will be green space there for the detention area as well, so there'll be quite a bit of green space in addition to the 30-foot buffer there, and even more so with respect to the fast-paced lot there. And then, Adam, I'll let you introduce yourself.
I'm Adam Ledsinger, I'm, again, I'm the engineer. Be glad to take any questions that you have, and just wanted to say, as far as the building elevations, we, we will meet or exceed your requirements on that, we just hadn't got that far along with them yet.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the commissioners now for questions, comments.
Okay, well, that's an introduction, oh, ooh. It's a lot of, a lot of feedback there. I don't know, I don't know where our sound engineer is, he's not in there. Oh, so, thank you for coming to us and bringing this idea for this development. I guess, the first question I have is, are you all in actual talks with Chick-fil-A and Starbucks and, and those groups? Are you actually in negotiations? Are you just sort of presenting this in sort of a wishful thinking, this is what we would love to see there?
Yes, we are in actual talks with all of the tenants that are listed.
A follow-up question to that, the parcel that you've kind of slated for Chick-fil-A is only slightly larger than the current Chick-fil-A parcel, and we have lots of trouble. I believe they are on their second or third drive-through revision, and my concern, having just a slightly larger parcel for a Chick-fil-A, instead of traffic backing up by Target in the Glenbrook area of Hendersonville, it would now be backing up on Main Street, which presents quite a problem. So I, I'm a little bit iffy on that site specifically for a Chick-fil-A, that's why I was wondering how far along you were in the discussions with that, and that's all I have for right now.
I may let Adam speak to kind of how it will stack up and everything as far as the traffic, but I know this is, they have designed it with the double drive-throughs, I believe, and given the connectivity and the way that we have, I believe there'll be some more additional space there. One other thing, like I said, we're not, we don't have specific agreements with them, but we have been talking to all three of them, and on the Chick-fil-A, one of their requirements will be that there's a light at intersection there, which will also help with traffic control, and so I think that's one of the things that we can get to later on, that's not at this part right here, but we can talk about that when we get to that process. Adam, do you have anything else to add about the...
I think that you pretty much hit everything. I would say that we've got our traffic study in now, we got that in late last week, and I don't know if the city's had time to review that, but that was, part of the traffic study was that we probably need a traffic signal there.
Probably need what?
A traffic signal.
Oh.
Trey, do you have anything to add about the traffic study?
Like Mr. Ledsinger said, we have not conducted, we had not had time to have a, a full review yet, but we will send it to our on-call traffic engineer to review in addition to myself and Steve reviewing it, so...
Believe...
And the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the request right now, obviously, is for the zoning itself, it's not for the specific tenants, which obviously, there will need to be a lot more discussion, and how do we make sure that it is appropriate and will not run into the problems that the current Chick-fil-A has? I think that's in everybody's best interest to figure that out, if that is going to be the proposed tenant there. So we're happy to work with everyone to make sure that it is, that it works for everyone, because we don't want to cause any additional traffic problems there.
Commissioner Evans, I believe you were lit up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to echo the concerns we've already heard, and I do understand that, that we're not to that point yet, but I've attempted to go into Chick-fil-A in Rivergate today, and it was backed out on the Main Street, and I kept driving. My congratulations to the late Truett Cathy, and, and what a phenomenally successful business he started. And having said that, we're looking at another Chick-fil-A location tonight that has outgrown its site, and we're also considering some townhomes that overbuilt their site, we're looking at other areas where, where we've just tried to cram too much in too small a space. And I would hope that the staff and everyone else involved would pay very close attention to this, because as Commissioner Silkwood says, we can't have cars backed up on Main Street, we can't do that. But thank you very much for bringing this development, I'm glad something's finally going into that, that area there, but we, we do need to look at that, we, we need to look closer at, at potential growth of these things that we're, we're putting in, and make sure that there is room to grow. And, and I don't see it with, with the Chick-fil-A, I, I don't see any room to grow there. So I hope that everyone involved does their due diligence on this, and doesn't get us in another mess where we've got to carve stairs off, or we've got to put in two or three more drive-throughs, or a double U-drive instead of a U-drive, or whatever it is. But please, let's do this right, especially right there on Main Street.
Totally agree, and we are hopeful that with the addition of a second Chick-fil-A, it will alleviate some of the traffic at the additional one, but, you know, we're, we're happy to work with you to make sure that it will be as efficient as possible and not cause those type of traffic problems.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll echo a lot of the comments, most importantly, thank you for looking for something to do with this very desirable piece of land, that's, it's exciting to see something being discussed there. I too, I don't eat at Chick-fil-A simply because I don't have the wherewithal for a Chick-fil-A drive-through. But I am curious, since one of the entrance points is through the bank parking lot, is that a conversation you're, you're also having with them today? They've approved this access through their parking lot?
Which bank are you talking about? Regions or Simmons?
Simmons, Simmons.
Okay. Simmons, we will actually own part of the drive there, so it's not actually going through their parking lot, is that correct?
That's right.
Regions, we have had conversations with them about cross-connectivity and being able to access that. The latest word we had from them was not, was no, right now, but we have recently sent them the redesigned plat and have not heard back from that. So as of right now, we would not have cross-connectivity through the Regions parking lot, but we would have access in through the drive there at Simmons Bank.
Okay. We're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves, and I appreciate that. The, the thought of a light just beyond that very busy intersection at, at Maple and Main Street seems illogical as a driver through that area, so I'm curious if that, how that light will be impacting traffic flow, and these are not things to address tonight, these are things I'm giving you fair warning, I will bring up again when we come back, and another fair warning topic is back on the, the drive-through and the stack. You very carefully illustrate 15 cars stacked at Starbucks, but nothing's shown, so I'll be curious to know when you do come with your site plan for the Chick-fil-A, how the total stack volume compares with this one to whatever iteration of drive-through redesign we will be on with the Glenbrook, Glenbrook facility, because they have continued to expand their capacity. That will be quite interesting, so more to come on that, but keep that in mind.
Yes, happy to address that, thank you.
Thank you.
Timothy, you're lit up down there, do you have anything that you want to add?
Yes, to, to that point about the, comparing the two sites, I did briefly compare this proposed location with the Glenbrook location, the Glenbrook location under their newly-revised proposed rerouting of their stacking lines that you'll see later on, that's about, they'll have about 220 feet of double drive-through length. That's not 200, that's not 220 feet, that, that's just the total length.
Sure.
So 220 times two. This one looks to have about 340 feet of double drive-through land. Again, that's just counting what's double, not what they have in single stacking.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, I think we just have that turned off, but we do have the cars, and I can get that number for how many cars we actually have stacked there, but it is all the way around the drive-through and up into the parking lot, into one of the parking bays, so it's quite a bit right there. I think we just have it turned off by accident.
Thank you. I do think the first Starbucks that can design a drive-through along the lines of a... a circular driveway out of a large-scale parking garage will be the winner.
Commissioner Hardwick.
She said that you guys are in discussions with everyone at this point. If Chick-fil-A requires a traffic light, you guys have a long road ahead, I view. Whataburger pulled out of the Mayfield development because they felt like there was no way they were ever going to get a traffic light approved, and chose to go to a different lot. I think everyone on this commission, especially those of us who live on this side of town, will do everything that we can reasonably to have a Chick-fil-A over here so that we don't have to drive to Glenbrook, and we don't have to take kids and grandkids over there. I think for us as commissioners, the question we have to answer ourselves tonight is, are we okay with a QSR restaurant going in there? Because if we approve that, and Chick-fil-A, Starbucks, whomever, the lease never gets signed, and Taco Bell shows up, are we okay with Taco Bell going in there? Because the zoning will, and I just use that as an example. It could be any QSR. But we all would love to have Chick, and we'd love to have Starbucks. But if leases don't get signed, are we okay with another QSR going in there? And that's the question that we have to answer to ourselves tonight.
I'm going to recognize myself for a moment here, and I'm going to echo Commissioner Hardwick's sentiments on that, because that's where I want to kind of draw the two. Looking at the proposed uses that you have here, I'm personally okay with everything that you have here. Do have a little bit of question about the call center, though. That just seems oddly placed in the uses that you've requested there. And I wanted to just get a little thought about, wanted to get a little background about y'all's thought process on that, why that was included as proposed use.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you said? A question about the what?
Just following along what Commissioner Hardwick said, that we're just looking at now proposed use is what you've got here on this. I'm okay with everything that you've asked for in here. The call center, though, that you've asked for as a proposed use, just seems a little odd on that. It just seems like it just, it stands out as a little different among the proposed uses. And I was just curious about the thought process of that, where y'all were coming through on about including that.
I can clear that up.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty easily. So, in addition to the uses that we had proposed, that, there were several that were recommended by staff, and that was one of them.
Okay.
So, we were just like, okay.
Yeah, I can tell you from the developer perspective, there's no plans for a call center.
Okay. Well, with that, Steph, if you'll chime in, kind of what your thoughts?
Yes. So, I did suggest that they add some more uses beyond just the two that they had written on there, and suggested some uses that they consider. Call, I added call center because that's something that's, it's basically office, is what it is. It can scale up or down. You could have a small call center. I think it could just as easily be removed, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I appreciate the background on that, because I just, like I said, it just stood out a little bit differently than that. My initial feeling was that that, I would feel more comfortable with that removed. I'll leave that up to the rest of the planning commissioners, because I appreciate your explanation.
We're fine with that if you want to remove it.
Okay. With that, and I'll just, going back to Chick-fil-A specifically, though, I'll, from what I've seen here, they just, I understand the concerns other people have brought up on the traffic and that sort of thing. I do think the traffic light is going to be a tough ask there. I want to get to that. I will say, though, it looks like you have more space here than what Gallatin Store does. Significantly more space for queuing and traffic. And then also, too, I'll mention that I was just, I was in Atlanta last week in Sandy Springs area, which, well, real estate's premium there on that. And I was at a Chick-fil-A that was about a quarter of the size of what you're talking about here. And it was, it was tight, but it made it work. And so, I don't, I see this as workable. Obviously, that's conversation from a little down the road. But I like the site plan as presented on this. I hope y'all are able to land a Chick-fil-A on that. But I'm comfortable with the uses that you've asked for, even if that did not materialize on that, so.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? With that, then, I will entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented with all staff comments. Removing call center from the approved uses. Or I'll make that motion if somebody will give. I'll make a motion that we approve with all staff comments of removing call center.
But technically, we're not approving any site plans of any kind.
Correct, correct.
We're recommending to the Board of Mayor and Alderman to rezone the property. And these are uses that are allowable for these areas, and uses that they are projecting as possibilities.
This wouldn't even technically be a rezone, as I understand it, because there's already a PUD there, and there's a PUD that includes.
But it has to go back to the Board of Mayor and Alderman for their blessing.
Yeah, I'm going to let Director explain the process for clarity's sake.
Yeah, this is a combined plan development. So, it's combined plan development. Technically, it is a rezone. It's being rezoned from general commercial and office plan development to just general commercial plan development. So, it would be considered a rezone. And so, then, the planning commission would make a recommendation this evening. And then, that recommendation, positive or negative, then that goes forward to BOMA for eventual final action. So, basically, what will happen is, this will go to the, next week's August the 8th General Committee meeting, and the General Committee will review it. They can take action to move it forward. They could move it forward with a positive recommendation, a negative recommendation, or a neutral recommendation. Then, that'll go to the next Board of Mayor and Alderman meeting, and then it'll have a first reading. And then, there'll be, about a month after that, there'll be a second reading, if it passes the first reading at BOMA. And then, at that second reading, there'll be an opportunity for a public hearing, where the public can, just like they did this evening, the public could then comment on it. And then, the Board of Mayor and Alderman would take the final action. Then, after that's approved, when all, whenever the uses are approved, and then new businesses come in and want to build, then individually, they'll all have to come back to the Planning Commission for a site plan and address a lot of these different issues that have come up tonight, once those uses are determined. And then, each site plan would come back to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would take final action on the individual site plans. So, that's kind of the process, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With that.
Yeah, I'll second your motion. And I think the developer has been well put on notice. He's got traffic concerns he's going to have to address, particularly when it comes back to the Planning Commission for any site plan approvals. But I will second your motion, sir.
Commissioner Evans, you're lit up.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm going to vote for this. I think it's appropriate zoning. However, if this were a site plan, I would vote no, because of all the additional left-turn traffic that is going to be coming out of this across at least two and three lanes of Highway 31. We just, we just, we're full. We're full out there. So, I'll have a problem voting for a site plan that looks like this when it comes back up.
Director, free.
I think, given the concerns that I've heard from the Planning Commission this evening, in this motion, it wouldn't be unreasonable, in addition to the language that you've already used in your motion, is to just add, also mention, add to that motion, mentioning that at such time, this, if this is successful and does come forward eventually with a site plan, that this is not, this is not, that traffic issues will have to be addressed at that particular time. I mean, so what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, if this gets, if this gets approved and recommended for approval, moves forward to BOMA, gets approved, and then it comes back, you know, eventually for a site plan, then, you know, I don't want it to, I don't want it to be, well, this was approved, so now we've got to approve this exact thing as a site plan. So, some limited language that would at least let the developer know, and for us to have for the record, when we, when we look, if we eventually look at a site plan on this, on one of these three lots, that noting that the traffic concerns and issues will be significantly weighed on the approval of that.
I agree with you, Mr. Director, but I don't know if I can recite that into a motion.
I think, I think just, I think just adding that the, that issues relating to the transportation-related issue, detailed transportation-related issues, will have to be determined at the site plan. And this is not acknowledging that it's good just the way, just the way it is. And it kind of gets a little confusing, because we're looking at a plan development that's like way up here, and then when we get down to the site plan, then that's going to be where we get into the super detail. But these details are very important to discuss and to be aware of. But I just want the developer to be aware. Maybe we don't even need to add it on there. Just me saying it is that just, I want to make the developer aware that at such time, if you're successful with your rezone plan development, and you come back for a site plan, that we're going to be looking very closely at these transportation issues. And in access, and we don't want to create a problem. So, anything you put forward in a site plan in the future is going to be scrutinized very closely to look at those things. So, I just kind of want to make you aware. I think that's probably enough.
We understand that it's another process that we'll have to go through to get final approval on any kind of site plans.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that obviously, kind of cleared that. And I'll just kind of, I like what you're doing right there, because just very simply, I like getting rid of self-storage as a permitted use. And I think the permitted uses that you have are much preferable to what we have there now. I think it's wonderful change to the property. But we've got a motion on the floor, and we have a second. So, Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. And I think we'll be seeing y'all again over the next several months, it sounds like. So, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item nine, site plans. And, oh, more talk about Chick-fil-A. So, if you would, kind of, as a developer, and Timothy, you on this one as well. So, if you would kind of kick us off, please.
Okay. So, this project is a, is currently going through staff-level review. But due to, during the course of review, Chick-fil-A discovered that they would need a waiver. So, a waiver requires Planning Commission review and approval. So, that part of it, that's what you're discussing, we're discussing tonight. So, the project is rerouting, reconfiguring, lengthening the stacking lane for Chick-fil-A. On page two, you can see the red line that represents the current stacking lane, and then the blue dashed line represents the proposed route. So, in reconfiguring the queuing lane, that has necessitated them to lose a few parking spaces. And in order to meet the city's required number of spaces, they have added some parallel spaces there along the northeast property line, adjacent to the private road that gives access to tire discounters. That road is private, it's owned, it's actually owned by tire discounters. It's on their lot, but it has a public access easement that allows access to, for Chick-fil-A and the Starbucks. So, the, adding those parallel spaces has pushed their curb line to within about a foot and a half of their property line. Our code requires a minimum of seven feet from the curb to the property line, so they have adequate space to put required landscaping. So, instead of seven feet, they've got about a foot and eight inches. They're just out of room. They did, I did ask them to reach out to tire discounters to see if tire discounters would consider just allowing them to plant the additional landscaping in the excess grass strip. So, if, in that same image, or actually, on page three, if you could see, the green strip is what they have on their side of their, on the Chick-fil-A side of the property line. The white space that has the dimension six foot, seven inches, that's what, that's remaining grass that would be on the tire discounters' lot. So, total combined width, they've, they've got the seven feet they need, but not on their property. And because they're, because they could not work anything out with tire discounters, they don't really have the adequate room to provide the required landscaping. They might can get some shrubs in there, maybe. But they're asking for a waiver to be allowed to have just one foot, eight inches instead of the required seven.
Thank you, Timothy. Do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Nancy Carreras, 1361 Prince Philip Drive, Castleberry, Florida.
Do you have anything you'd like to add after?
No. We did revise the landscape plan and addressed all the comments, beefed it up, added the shrubs that you needed, instead of the three gallons to five gallon. There was some that did not have enough room. So, I believe the landscaper's going to revise it with additional plantings needed, all within the landscape ordinance that you provided.
Thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? Christian Hasty.
Hi. This could be a staff-approved project, except for a waiver, from what I understand. And I believe that the benefit we're going to derive from the increase in the stacking on their property for their traffic, more than, you know, it, the waiver is, well, with something that I could recommend, you know, for the benefit we're getting for what they're doing. So, I mean, I, I don't want to jump the gun with anybody talking, but I'd make a motion we grant the waiver.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Shin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Next up on the agenda under site plans is Jackson Townhomes Site Plan Amendment. Grant, you've been working on this one. And will you get us started, if you don't mind, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, they have amended the plan slightly from the, from last month's submittal. This new submittal actually eliminates the, there was a nominal grass strip that they added just to try to, to meet that requirement. Varied from like two feet to about a half a foot. But it's, that's just between the driveways, so it really equaled out to where there wasn't very much grass strip at all, anyway. So, basically, what this, this proposal is, it creates a walkway on the south side, if you can see that. And if you look at the picture on the right there, they have already adjusted those stairs to, to meet the proposed plan, just to try to show, and kind of get a head start, hopefully, for them, and try to show that they have an extra room there to, to add that walkway. And going by the plan, that, that walkway on the south side, it's essentially, it's, varies from like six and a half feet to 10 feet. So, it requires, adds plenty of walkway on that south side, which essentially is, is the sidewalk that was required as part of the plan development. And the main issue that we had previously with the steps and the roadway... And the main issue that we had previously with the steps in the roadway, that was, or the steps out to the roadway, they are currently tearing those steps out in, in order to try to, to show that, that they're working to meet, you know, meet, meet the, a different standard there. And you can kind of see that on the, the left side on that photo there on the, on the presentation. And basically, per this plan, that will leave between three and a half and six feet on the north side. So three and a half foot would be essentially where the steps went out to the roadway. There would be three and a half feet there now with the shortened steps that, that they're, they've added in there. And they did provide the renderings that they did not have last month, and this is a, this is a, a drawing of the steps that's been provided. They did work with, with our City Codes Department and Greg Story, and looking at these and trying to make sure that these meet, meet the International Residential Code. He has actually went out and looked at these steps on the south side that have already been completed and stated that they, you know, by, by email, they, they, they do meet that, that, the 2018 Resident, International Residential Code, which is what the city's under at this time. So they, they have met that requirement and provide the renderings that we'd requested of them, as well as, as working with the codes department and getting that approval. I think, if there's any other things, if you can move forward on that presentation, I just want to see. That shows previously what, what those steps look like, and then when you go back to the, the last drawing, or the last photo there, now you can see there's a significant difference in that, that walkway that'll be provided there. So, so that does very much, is very much more in the spirit of what was approved with the final development plan we fill, and really addresses the, the issue of the walkway at least, and then really takes, takes care of that issue. So they, they did propose this, and they have gotten to us everything they've, would require of them, and just wanted to put that forward for their approval.
Thank you. Anything y'all have to add?
I, I just want to add, we, when I was out there tonight looking, and on the north side, the steps are done, and I think it's going to be over four and a half feet is the smallest area from the last step to the, to the drive. I've asked Chance, and my name's Bob Bowser, I live in the Hunt Club, I'm with the investment team, unfortunately, on this thing. So I have asked them and been involved in the last month, talking about getting a new architecture team and for the backside. And I watched the meetings the last two months that you guys have had and listened to all the comments. So I decided to step in and get, get involved, so that's why I'm here, willing to answer any questions or whatever, so.
I'll open it up to questions, comments from commissioners. Commissioner Longmire?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, personally, I think this thing is a mess. I went out and looked at it, and when do you find out that steps don't fit an area? I mean, do you just wait till it's time to put the steps up, and then you say, oops, it won't go? I really don't know. I'd like to know when, because we have similar things to this that we're talking about all the time. Can you help me keep?
Yeah, this is something where the developer had installed the steps, and then we actually, because of some other issues, there was origin, the original first building, set of, set of buildings that was built out there, it didn't match the roof line that was approved, so we required them to rip off the whole roof line and replace it. And then also there were some other things with the exteriors that needed to be done. I think you'd have to ask the developer why, why that exactly happened, but we, the developer didn't bring it to our attention. We just caught it out on an inspection, on this, just looking at the, the progress of what was going on. And the steps were all the way out there, the way we've all seen them on the photos that Grant was talking about, so.
I'll add, I think there's multiple issues and multiple blame to go around. I think it's on the builder, it's on us. I think there's multiple issues to happen.
But very, 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 I'm sure the developer could echo it, this is a very costly mistake that had been made. And as you can see, all those big brick steps all being ripped out and having to be redone. It's just, it's a very, very costly error. And I think with, with what they have done and what they provided, it's, it's about, I think, the best that it can be fixed. And it is very close to the approved, approved site plan, except for the small grass strip that was, I think it was maybe two foot originally that was going to be there. But other than that, it's, it's fair, it's fairly close.
Do you have any other questions or comments?
We could go on, but it's the same thing.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, and thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for what is, I'm sure, a painfully high amount of budget on this unplanned. I'm just curious, and you mentioned, Mr. Bowser, potentially just looking at a whole new architecture firm, sort of starting from scratch. I am curious, and I guess time will tell, what you will do with the rest of the property beyond these, these three buildings? You know, are these going to become the ugly ducklings of the, the development and its?
No, no, no. So the, the rest of the investment team, they were, they've been business partners of mine for a while, and they usually do really high-end residential. When this was brought to our attention, like they do stuff in the cliffs in South Carolina, if you guys are familiar with that, down in Florida. Sorry.
You're seven foot two.
So, yeah, the, the team with the investment team, part of the reason we wanted to get involved in this was because of the high-end finishes inside and how nice they were supposed to be going in, right? So, and if you've walked inside of them, they are really, really nice. Outside of the steps and the stairs inside, they're, they're, everything that they get involved in is really, really nice. They usually do high-end residential, $5 million and up in other areas. They're not in, they're not interested in just doing anything back there. So I think everything's on the table right now as to what the options are. I've been in the building industry for a while in Middle Tennessee. I know all the builders up here, and we've been in talks and trying to kind of pick their brains as to high-end. I, I need to go back at the original planning commissions and see what the square footage plans are to make sure that we live up to that on the back end, and trying to answer the step questions for back there. I think there needs to be, obviously, more conversations about what goes on, but that's, yeah, that's the plan.
Commissioner Hardwick?
I know this has been a hard and painful process. I just want to appreciate you stepping in and working with staff to get to a solution that works for everyone, and thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
And I'll just add before making a motion here, because obviously the only thing that's differing now at this point, after everything's been worked out, is the lack of the grass strip. And I'm just, this is just personal bias on this. I love grass strips, I hate narrow grass strips, I think that they, what you're trying to get for aesthetic, what, what you give up as far as just the practicality of a thing makes it a nuisance then. And so I'd actually prefer having no grass strip and to one that's too short, so I'm okay with this solution.
So part of that is, like, we met, and I don't remember who met originally, when, when this was brought up a couple months ago, and talked about the plan, and we talked about how really hideous that was going to look. And I think that was just part of the overall discussion. I don't, I don't necessarily think we just threw that out there. I think that was part of a team discussion on why that's there.
Okay, okay. Well, thank, I appreciate your candor on that, so, but with that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve as presented with all staff comments.
I'll second.
And we have a second for Commissioner Altizer. Ms. Shin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
No.
Longmire?
No.
Martin?
Epstein.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 10, preliminary plats. We've got two on there. The first one is for Baird Farms, their preliminary plat. Grant, you and Sidney both were on this. Y'all want to flip a coin? Who wants to take this? Okay.
I, I can take this one, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a previously, this is a previously annexed and approved preliminary plat, or annexed area and a preliminary plat for 160, it was previously approved with 167 lots and nine open space tracks. Basically, it, it's expired after, after two years, and they had to bring this back for, for reapproval. The new final plat, though, has two less lots, it's 165 lots, and these are all single-family home lots. The open space has increased from the previous submittal from 13.6 acres up to 16.97 acres, which is a fairly significant increase. And in addition, they're, they're proposing a playground with this. This is all straight SR1 zoning, and so it's allowed by Wright. This is also part of the Norman Way Collector, which goes from Saundersville Road all the way to, of course, it's showing to Anderson Lane, but, Anderson Road, but it actually, you know, goes, winds through Germ Farms and, and really onto New Shackle as part of that. So, so it's a very, very important road extension through the northern part of the city. And one of the things that we did want to bring up on this is, they did propose a change here. There was a number of reasons for that, one of them were the grades, another one was a, the presence of a fiber optic cable, they've stated. But the previous plat there, the, which is kind of the option B shown there, showed the connection with Fountain Brook Drive terminating into Norman Way in this subdivision, which that would go through Fountain Brook and, and in there. Essentially, it's not another connection so, so much as it is, it's just everything does end up going into Norman Way traffic-wise. So, so there's really not a ton of benefit to that initially, and looking at that, I, I was curious why they, they were requesting that. And then, but then looking at that, if you look at, at Fountain Brook to the, to the west of this, all of those roads terminate into Norman Way as well, so, so it's really no, no added benefit to have that connection. And I think the, they're going to have some grade issues and, and kind of like with, with Fountain Brook, and that was going to cause some, some issues in terms of just how the, the lots look and how the homes would be, would be set on this development. So they, they stated in doing this, it could be more of a natural grade and natural look with, with the homes and lots. So does it, does it appear to be a major issue with, with this request for option A? Just because it, it doesn't have a particularly major benefit to connectivity and, because the, the, if you look at the intersection with Macy, it's actually right before you, you enter, enter on Norman Way on the east, or on the west side. So, so that's, that's one thing to, to consider, you know, in looking at that. So I don't think that staff has any issues with, with either one. There will be a stub out in Fountain Brook, on Fountain Brook Drive, if this is approved. I think we will probably look at working with that developer to get a, a stub out there. So, or a, maybe some parking spaces for the, the required mailbox kiosk or something like that. So, but as far as this development goes, we're, we're, we're looking at that in, in, in these lots, and it appears to be a, a similar or superior submittal as, as the previous approval.
Jim Harrison, I'm with, I'm not quite as tall, Jim Harrison, CSTG. We are in agreement with all comments, appreciate staff working with us. Grant did a great job of explaining it. The option A and option B is just something, as we looked closer at the grading, we felt like we could do a lot better job grading the lots to match the natural ground. So we wanted to bring that to planning commission. We're not hard and fast about either way, but we felt like we would be not doing the right thing to not get it up here and talk to you about it a little bit. But just here to answer any questions, Grant covered it, it's, it's really just kind of renewing a previous plat we had, minus two lots, so. Thank you.
Questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here tonight. So I remember back in 2020 when you all requested to be annexed into the city. And one of the reasons that that passed, and you all were annexed into the city, was to create better connectivity in that area that we knew was going to develop. So I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about not having that connection through Fountain Brook. Although, you know, I have heard what the staff has said, it's not a major issue to not have that extra connection. But I do kind of feel like putting all that extra traffic through Norman Creek that could be at least a little bit alleviated by going through Fountain Brook would probably be my preference. And again, just going back to 2020 with the connectivity, I think, if, if anything, being on the commission, we've seen that the greater connectivity we can provide and ensure that happens throughout the city obviously alleviates traffic on some of our main roads. So I'm a big fan of having more connectivity, not less. So we'll see what other commissioners might say.
And we just want to hear the rest of the input. I will add this as context a little bit. We helped and worked alongside the, the developers in there to locate the east-west connector, and you're exactly right. The east-west connector was designed and located there to, to create connectivity. It was hard because a lot of that area is hilly, and so that's why the east-west connector is located where it is. And part of what Grant pointed out was, when you look to the west, and we honestly had to look at an overall map to see this, there's additional connections already in Fountain Brook that go directly to the east-west connector. So when we looked at it, we were like, well, you really just don't see a lot of benefit when you really look at the specifics of this exact situation. But completely respect, agree with everything you said about the heart and the intent and the, the, the trajectory that we had on creating the east-west connector, going back over 20, 30 years with the city. I remember driving through there a long time ago in, in Country Hills, looking at connections that couldn't be made, and we realized how important that is.
I'm going to recognize myself for a moment. I'm going to agree with everything that Commissioner Silkwood just said, but take a little bit different tact on it, just specific to this. Conceptually, I agree with everything you said, but knowing the issues that we've had with Fountain Brook, and specifically where the one national developer came in and bought all those homes, and they're going to be rental properties, this actually segments them off on that and protects the value of the homes in Baird Farm on that and to not necessarily backed up to everything that's all rental on that to come through their area, neighborhood. I know that you've got more tact than to say that, Mr. Harrison, but I'll, I'll say it on that. So I think that, from that perspective on that, I think that it actually makes a better development for Baird Farm doing that. Does better for the city doing that, so I'm in favor of the proposed change on that, so. But other questions, comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Hasty?
Jim, as you and I discussed previously, I agree with Commissioner Silkwood. Connectivity is good, no matter where, why, or what. It just gives greater options. There may not be that great of a benefit, but I think the benefit that you could derive from connectivity that it should be put in. So. I mean, I think you got a good plan, but I'd like the connectivity personally.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will you summarize again what you just said a moment ago? Because right now, I'm more aligned with Commissioners Hastings and Silkwood about seemingly disproportionate flow of traffic being encouraged through Norman Creek versus taking advantage of the option of Fountain Brook taking some of that volume. So if you would, Mr. Chairman, just repeat for me what you said. Thank you.
If we can keep the preliminary plat up there, I'll try to use that as example. No, go back to where you were. I'm sorry. Yeah, right here. This area right here, and I wish I could kind of point out, just wish I had a little laser pointer that actually helped. But they're talking about doing, where all those, where that national developer had come in and bought everything up to put all rental homes. That's the area that the connector would be built through right there. So it would have that connecting into Baird Farm. But if the rerouting it down here to closer to Norman Creek, what's highlighted right here, that would kind of divert it away from that and would kind of keep the rental area kind of off to itself. And it would keep it from flowing in to where owner-occupied homes are in the Baird Farm development. So that's why I like what's being proposed here on that. Because it protects the value of the Baird Farm homeowners there on that. That's my thought process.
Other questions, comments from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Grant.
And can staff ask a question of the applicant?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. One thing I hadn't thought about really in looking at this, Jim. Has there been any looks as far as the, how the intersection with Fountain Brook Drive as far as grades and the curve, how that would intersect with Norman Way? Like, has there been any real looks at how that intersection would work? Would there be any site distance issues or anything like that that you're aware of? I know it's preliminary, so it's...
We would design it so there weren't any site distance issues. That said, it does, when you do that design, you're coming across the property line between Baird Property and Fountain Brook is at the crest of the ridge. So it is going to be a substantial amount of cut that you have to do. And so that's one of the things, it's a grading benefit, is it's not really fitting it per the natural ground as well. This allows us to minimize those cuts and fills and the slopes. And that's part of, I probably should have explained this a little bit more. That's part of the heart behind this is you're trying to make it naturally fit in a residential lot as much as you can, not like make a slope like you would see along the side of a roadway or something. And that's what we're trying to get at. We would make it meet the site distance, but it is going to be challenging to move across the top of the hill. I'm not saying we can't do it. We can do it. But we just don't feel like it's the best way to do it. And that's why I wanted to come and talk tonight.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? I see somebody's hand moving toward a microphone. Who was that?
Commissioner Hardwick. So if we only have the one connection, you're going to have 165 homes all flowing through Norman Creek. We, there's actually on the west side, on the west side of the property line, there's, I believe it's Marin Street. Is that the name of the road that's in Fountain Brook?
There's a Macy.
Marin Drive is the one that's immediately west. And so there are actually two connections, maybe three, but I know of two at least. One is Macy and the other is Marin that exists within Fountain Brook coming down to the East-West connector. And then there's a number of connections. There's one, two, three, four connections within Baird Farm that come down to the East-West connector. And then they interconnect outside of that, too. So the reason we brought this, we're here just asking a question. We want to do it the way y'all want to do it. We're okay either way. So I'll say that. But we just, when we looked at that connection that went across the top of the ridge that really kind of came from Marin Drive across the property line, and I'm going to go up here and point to it.
Yes, yeah.
It's really this connection, this is Fountain Brook over here, is this connection right here. And making this connection down to the East-West connector. There already is within Fountain Brook a connection here. Correct. And then there's already another connection here. And so we've got a number of interconnected connections outside the East-West connector. It was just when we looked at this connecting over here, it does provide some measure of benefit, but it didn't provide the amount of benefit we felt it was worth, the magnitude of the grading that we were going to see, grading that road out across, because there's a ridge. There's a ridge line, the top of the ridge is right there between the two properties. So we're going to have to cut through it. So we just felt like it would be better to come talk with y'all about this and see how y'all felt about it. Because we believe in connectivity, too. We design all the time with connectivity. It is important, but we also want to make sure we're looking at not only the connectivity in the roads, but looking at the vertical and the grading and how it all fits together and make sure that we're taking a good close look at that. So will this be built out at the same time Forest Park is being built out? When do you see the two coming? Because as of right now, the only real connection will be through Anderson, Norman Creek. They will both, Forest Park will, I believe, Forest Park will happen first from Saundersville Road. But at some point in time, and I can't, no one can definitively say exactly what that timeline is, but at some point in time, I would say probably within the second or third phase of Forest Park, you would see Baird Farm starting to develop as well. So you see it being, you see it being on the ladder? Thanks. It's going to happen while Forest Park is still under construction. I would say that's pretty, I'm... I hit Mike up here. We can't say for sure. That's why I got to get the expert.
Mike's standing, represent the ownership team. So we're currently working on Forest Park plans, trying to get Phase 1 plans approved. We'd like to get that started as quick as we can. It's been a long time. Baird, we don't have a builder for it yet. They could be simultaneous if we get another builder for the Baird Farm. Or it could be, like Jim said, it could be in the second, third phase. If it's just a progression of Forest Park, we just don't know that at this point. We'd like for both of them to be going at the same time. We really want that connection. We think it benefits Forest Park, it will benefit Baird, it benefits the city. So we're just happy we own it, we can control it, and hopefully it works the way we all want it to. And back to trying to get, I'm a visual person. So if this is the Baird Farm and this is Fountain Brook, you've got to grade something like this because you have a pinch point. We've got to connect to that road down at Fountain Brook. If we don't connect that, then we've got this, and we could improve Baird so that the lots don't have steep driveways going into them, don't have steps in the front where you've got grade going uphill. And you got the situation at the townhome situation, we've got a bunch of steps. You've got steep driveways. Just doesn't look good, doesn't sell well, doesn't present well for the city either. And homebuyers don't like it. You could force that, but what we're trying to do with this proposal is not do that. It gives us more ability to work more with the land, which I think what we've all been seeing. But that connection down there pinches us. We have no choice. So, if that helps.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the visual. The pen actually helped me. But I'm curious now with, you may need to come back with your pen.
You're popular, yeah.
Yeah. Come back and be the expert for a second.
Come back and be the expert.
Now I'm concerned about drainage. If you've got one neighborhood sitting above the other.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's why you were turning red while he held his pen up. Okay.
Everything we do with the roads, we'll have to take a look at the catch basins, the capacity of the catch basins, the spread of the flow on the road. So it'll have to be designed in accordance with that. We have to do that as part of the construction plans.
You may have just lost some of your expert status.
We want to do that, but we have to do it, too.
All right, thank you. So that helps. And then I'm just curious, this is not for you, this is for Keith or some member of staff. What schools will these neighborhoods go to? High school? Are they beach? Are they...
I think it is zone for beach in that area, but I'm not sure. Do you know, Jim?
I don't definitively know. I've always thought of this area being kind of in between Station Camp and Beach. And there's a line in there. I don't know exactly.
Yeah, there was a new line just created a couple of years ago that did change this a little bit. And I'm not for sure, but I think Fountain Brook, I believe, is in beach and stayed in beach. But Baird, I'm not for sure. Forest Park is Station Camp. But I'm not for sure really which school Baird is in.
I believe it's in between the two. And I wouldn't, it wouldn't be a surprise that the line hasn't been set yet, so.
We will take a look at that and see.
Because I will say that if Baird is in beach, a connector through Fountain Brook feels better to me so that there is a way for more of that traffic while people are trying to get to Nashville and other places to work going through the Norman Creek from Baird through the others. All right, just curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for commissioners?
Station Camp? There you go.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. For clarity's sake, did you say Baird was half and half?
He's got the map up there.
Okay, okay.
And you can see, it's really where the mouse is circling right now. You can see Fountain Brook over to the west. So it does look like it splits it.
Okay. Okay.
So it's right on the edge like we guessed.
I'll ask this, just kind of actually piggybacking off what Commissioner Slattery asked. And this would be generally outside of your area expertise. And so if you want to defer, but I know you've done some work for the school system, too, on this. When they do this, I mean, there's obviously nothing there right now on that. When would they go back and take a look at this again? I mean, is it something that you would be in position to talk with them about if you had a preference on one or the other on that?
Yeah, not really. I mean, I wouldn't be in a position. I do know that because of my relationship with the schools, that they look very actively. They meet with the planning departments throughout the county, and they look at new developments that are coming on. And they are concerned with how the transportation element works within that as well as obviously the capacity of schools as they take in all that into consideration. But it's just a general understanding that I have.
Okay. And I appreciate that because it gives a little insight, the decision we might make tonight, that there's going to be some consideration for that and potentially some consideration for that in the future on that. So then Commissioner Silkwood, you might be able to speak to that process a little bit as well on that. I mean, is that, does that sound right? I mean, if we, depending on what we can do, what we did tonight on this as far as that connector road, that theoretically, the school board would take that in consideration in future zoning, or school zoning on that?
Yes, well, I never took part in a zoning shift while I was on the school board. That does sound theoretically correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Well, seeing none, then I am going to entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one. Commissioner Hardwick?
I will make a motion, but help me understand again exactly what we're doing. We either, they either will only have the one connection, or we're going to say, no, you have to have two, correct?
That's correct. I think in the motion to approve, it'd be a motion to approve with all staff comments, the preliminary plat, option A or option B. Option A would be decreasing the connectivity. And option B would be keep it closer to what it already is with the connectivity going through there.
So do we make a motion for option A, and it's either voted yes or no? And if it's voted no, then option B is by default what's going to happen?
Yeah, I think if you did that with these, with these two options, if you made a motion in A or B and it failed, then I think you make a motion with the other and see how that goes. So, but it would be two votes if the first one did not pass.
So I will make a motion for option A with all staff comments, which is reducing the connectivity.
I will second that motion. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
No.
Longmire?
No.
Martin?
No.
Slattery?
No.
Silkwood?
No.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Thank you. With that, I will, actually, Commissioner Hardwick, we'll let you do the honors on this one.
So I am going to make a motion then for option B with all staff comments.
And I will second that one. And Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Sorry.
Put you on the spot there a little bit. Sorry about that.
We didn't know there would be two votes.
Yeah.
Altizer?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is another preliminary plat. This is for Curtis Crossroads subdivision. Sidney, you're on this. And do we have a representative for the owner here as well on that? Sidney, will you get us started, please?
Certainly. I first wanted to take a moment to address the public comments. Typically, when a development comes through, there's two paths. And one, which is predominantly what Hendersonville has been used to for the past several decades, is called a planned development rezoning, where there's greater density. But then the developer offers to kind of incentivize that by building sidewalks or taking care of drainage or having nicer designs or paying some, you know, per lot fees to help improve the area generally. And that's what Hendersonville has largely been used to. Then there is what's called straight zone, which is also known as by right, which means we have certain requirements that say the lot has to be this size. There have to be street trees if there's more than 10 lots. There has to be sidewalks in this neighborhood only. But there doesn't have to be improvements to the surrounding properties other than making sure the road access is appropriate. And that is what this particular request is for. It is a by right request for eight lots, eight residential lots, and then two open space drainage lots to accommodate the drainage concerns for that property. They will have to have street trees within this subdivision, and they will have to have sidewalks for this subdivision. If you remember, they came back earlier this year with a request to come off of Curtis Crossroads and Sanders Ferry at that elbow. And we were like, hey, that's just not safe, by right, like this doesn't meet safety concerns. So they revised it to come off of Wood Duck Lane, and they will have to make the required access improvements to Wood Duck Lane. They have otherwise addressed and agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you. Would you introduce yourself if you have anything to add to Sidney's comments, please?
And we agree with staff on all of their comments and thank them for all of the help they provided.
Thank you. Opening up to questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Evans?
Okay, first of all, there was a pond down there...
Okay, first of all, uh, there was a pond down there where the drainage basin is gonna go, just below that pond and/or drainage basin once it's put in. There was recently a home built across what I would call a ditch that came out of that pond, uh, on the next street over. I would like to hear from stormwater. I don't know how that was ever allowed to be done in the first place, but the ditch has actually been routed around the house. And I don't see how in the world it'll handle the drainage over there without, uh, a flooding problem on that house. I know that's not the problem of the subdivision, but it's something that should be taken into consideration. And I'd like to hear from staff on that. Second thing is, everything we've talked about here tonight is about traffic. We're taking, uh, a residence and we're changing it to eight residences, which goes from 10 car trips a day out of that lot to 80 onto Sanders Ferry Road. And we know Sanders Ferry Road is a very poor, very poor road. We've been looking at it for years and we haven't done anything. You drop off the shoulder and you're in trouble. The third thing is, we refer to this in this proposal as a five acre parcel. This is not a five acre parcel. This is a residence sitting on a five acre lot. And what we've got in that area and many other areas is an opportunity for someone to subdivide every estate and change it into multi, multiple houses on a very small plot. And as we've discussed earlier on some other things we've been talking about, we keep trying to cram too much into too little space from one end of town to the other. The infrastructure on that whole peninsula is just not up to standard. And it's not up to adding that much more in that lot. And what might be, uh, a trend setter that causes every five acre lot over there to be sold to someone who wants to put eight houses on it. And it looks to me like, uh, from, from my perspective, and I drive through there every day, this is just not a good idea, especially with the drainage issues we've got, with, with, uh, the traffic issues we've got, and the very simple fact that we establish expectations in here as a planning commission. We, we lead people to expect certain things. That's why we don't buy our, the home of our dreams and we have a short-term rental next door to us all of a sudden. That's not a good thing. We also don't expect to buy, uh, a lot next to an established residence and expect it all of a sudden to be subdivided and, and, uh, much more density put on it. Uh, I, I just don't think that's fair to the people next door. And, and I know that there's a limitation on what we can do on that, but, uh, I, I would like to see something done before we see every larger residence on a larger lot in the city, uh, converted into multiple housing units. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Longmire?
I'm sorry, nope, did that narrow.
I'll just ask for the developer. Were you here for a public comments or assistance comments section earlier? I think you were.
Uh, yes, I was.
Okay. Would you mind addressing some of the concerns that were brought up during the public comments section?
Uh, yes, um, so as far as the drainage is concerned, we do, we are diverting the offsite stormwater around the property via a ditch or a swell that runs on the north side. And then we're proposing a by retention pond along as a, or as well as a wet detention pond. So that should handle all of the stormwater flows from the developments. We would not be creating any excess flows in what's currently there now. We're gonna be maintaining the existing drainage flows there. As far as the traffic goes, we were, we previously submitted to go onto Curtis Crossroads due to the safety concerns. We are now going on Wood Duck Lane. We are going to eight lots. We originally proposed 10, and then we created extra space for the drainage to make sure that we were committed to not making a bad situation from a stormwater standpoint. So we did reduce that down to eight lots, and I worked with the developer on that. And as far as the home quality, uh, we're looking at roughly 2,500 to 3,000 square foot homes, two stories, keeping it with kind of the existing topography, making them not, look nice. We're not trying to put up something quick and get out. So that's kind of the, uh, the current idea for the development.
And I'm going from memory, but I think another item was brought up with sidewalks as well. Can you touch on that as well, please?
Yes, um, we are proposing sidewalks along the entire interior, or interior of the development, all the way along Wood Duck Lane extending to Sterling Road. So there will be a full loop along the development, all the way around the cul-de-sac and back up to Sterling. And then we have a mailbox kiosk that comes off in a little bit of open space along the side of the sidewalk in one of the, in open space one, which is to the south of the property, on the south side.
Thank you. Other questions, comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You know, I do recognize that this is a, a by right subdivision, but I do wanna echo the sentiments of Commissioner Evans. Not necessarily directed at you, but just maybe as a commission, that, you know, this is, this is setting a precedent. And I think this is something that we should look at, concurring fully with Commissioner Evans. And the last thing I'll say is that this is a big improvement, a connection off of Sterling through Wood Duck, as opposed to the original plan, which would have impeded traffic and created a more, even more dangerous section of Curtis Crossroads. So I am happy to see that you all took that suggestion. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioners Silkwood. Any other questions, comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with all staff comments. Can I get a second on that, please?
I'll second it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Altizer. Ms. Shin, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, are we ready to go?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes. Yes.
Martin?
No.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
No.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item 11 on our agenda is other. We have a resolution recommending acceptance of completed streets of Windbrook Phase Six, Hendersonville, Sumner County, Tennessee. And I'll let Director Free just tell us exactly what streets we're looking at here.
Yeah, this, this property here, as you can see on the, uh, on the screen, on, uh, on, uh, the, uh, the Windbrook subdivision has been through the Public Works Committee, and they have approved it. And then the next step is it just comes to us. Then from here, it'll go directly to Boma for their final approval. And everything appears to be in order, and, uh, the, uh, Public Works Department has reviewed it, and the city, uh, planning staff has as well.
Thank you. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented.
Oh, sorry.
I think Commissioner Silkwood beat Commissioner Altizer on that one, so we have. He got the last one, we're gonna give this one to Commissioner Silkwood on this. We have a motion and a second. Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Altizer?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Slattery?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next item, item 12, it's got staff level projects approved. I'll turn that over to Director Free and let him run through.
Yes, I'll just hit, I'll hit the, uh, the highlights of the approved and the, uh, and the pending. Still working with the, approved the Chival Drive Parking Lot Edition. Millstone, uh, Phases One through 12, just a small FDP amendment. Queen Bee Boutique Portable Building Site Plan. Winston Hills, uh, Phase Seven Lot One Amendment of their final plat. On projects that are pending that we're working on right now is finalizing, uh, the, uh, final plat for the Whataburger site over on Main, on 164 East Main Street. Forest Park Phase One FDP Amendment, just a slight adjustment, uh, of what they're making to Forest Park. Also, let me see here. Rockland Road Kennel Site Plan, uh, working with, uh, with a, um, business owner on that. Saundersville Consolidation, this is actually the plat that is next to, you know, the sign out there in, in front of Windcrest Subdivision. This is the lot, the vacant lot that's to the left of that, that goes right up to 386. So they're consolidating some small pieces, uh, some, some small pieces of that property there. Also, um, the UFC gym, uh, site plan for that, that project, that will be replacing the bookstore at the Streets of Indian Lake. So there'd be a, a gym, uh, that's gonna be located there. And that's everything, but I can answer any questions anybody might have.
Commissioner Hasty?
Couple of questions if you could on the status of some site plans that have previously been approved.
Yes, sir.
If you know offhand.
Yes, sir.
We approved a twice daily service station up here off Saundersville Road.
Yes.
Some time ago. Do you know where, where they're at or what that status is right now? If not, you know, we'll catch you later.
No, I can, I think I'm aware of that. And then Timothy, uh, if there's something additional, just chime in on that. That was approved, uh, that location, uh, there were, there ended up being some stream-related issues that constricted the site. So I think they were gonna have to look at going, uh, a little bit further west to get into another lot. But we haven't, uh, we haven't heard anything back from them, so there's no, no progress that we're aware of at this time. But the site that was approved, at least the last we heard, uh, that, that wasn't going to work because of some drainage, some drainage-related issues to a stream, uh, that's over there in that area.
We had a coffee shop up here behind, by the Mexican Restaurant on this end of town.
Uh, that's a.
I forgot the name of the brand of it.
Yeah, that's Scooters Coffee up there, uh, on, right there in that area by the Mex, by the Mexican Restaurant. And, uh, we've been working with them for probably five or six months. There were some different issues relating to the right-of-way that we were requiring, the sidewalk on that adjacent road. And so we kind of went back and forth and back and forth on that. But they ju, they just recently have made the final changes. And I think we have that plat, uh, that's under, under review. So that is moving forward. They still are interested and wanna do that. But, um, uh, we were holding them to the, what was approved at the planning commission on the improvements that they had to make to the property. But I think there was some, there was some stuff between the property owner and Scooters on who should do that, or if it should have to be done. And so, but they're gonna, they're gonna do what they need to do.
And we approved a site plan for, um, across from the entrance of Scottish Highlands.
The High Life, Highlight.
And a music venue and, you know.
Yeah, uh, we haven't heard anything in regards to that, uh, so I don't really know where that, where that is. We have not heard that, uh, it's, they're not pursuing it. But we haven't heard anything since the, since the approval of the site plan.
How long does site plan approval good for?
The site plan approval on that, I believe now is two years? Yeah, two years, uh, on that. And then I think you can get an extension for one year, maybe, or if it's two, I know it's two years. So it's good for two years. And that two years has a way of, uh, as we saw with Baird Farms, uh, that two years goes by pretty quick.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chairman, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Hasty? Commissioner Silkwood, you were lit up. Okay. With that, we'll just kinda let Director Free go on. We don't have any other items on the agenda, so I'll let him roll on to Planning Director's comments as well.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to make the announcement that, uh, Caitlin Shin has, uh, has obtained the position of Assistant Planner, uh, replacing Lauren Berry that had left, uh, a couple of months ago. And so we're very excited about that. And, and Caitlin's doing a great job. And you'll see just little adjustments and changes that'll be made to some of your things. You already probably saw them tonight, uh, with our PowerPoints and, uh, with our staff reports. And so we really, uh, we're very excited, uh, about having Caitlin in that position. And, uh, she's done such a great job in the last five years that she's been here. And, uh, we're just, uh, we're very blessed to have her. So congratulations, Caitlin. And, uh, her position of planning technician, uh, we're currently recruiting that position. We have a lot of applicants already. Probably maybe the end of next week, we'll kind of assess, uh, the volume of applicants that we have. And, uh, we'll start interviews and hopefully fill that position, uh, hopefully within the next three to four weeks. So, uh, but, uh, that's, uh, all that I had to report. I, I do wanna just mention, uh, Jason Hollers, uh, that is, uh, is back there in our IT department. He's here, you know, with us, uh, every, every night that we have a meeting. And, uh, I tell you, I, we just really appreciate, we appreciate the opportunity to work with him. He's a great person to work with, does a great job. And so we really appreciate his efforts in getting, uh, getting our meetings out to the public. And he's done that on a very consistent, highly professional basis, and we just really appreciate that. It means a whole lot.
Thank you, Jason, and congratulations, Caitlin.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. We did not have any sign, uh, for our public comments on non-agenda items. So I will skip past that, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right, we got a motion from Commissioner Slattery. Kinda get us Commissioner Slattery, oh, I can't even talk. Um, we have, we have a second too. So all in favor, please signify by saying ah.
Ah.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.